...
Vice Mayor here to lead us in the fight of the ladies.
Attention, physicians, leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Vice Mayor here had made the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ladies first.
Commissioner.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is citizens' participation. At this time, we welcome citizens to come forward, maybe share some info with us or anything that they might have they want us to hear about. So, uh, do we have anyone that'd like to come speak to the commission? Okay, no one coming forward then. I'll end that. Item number two, and we'll start number three. Consider an ordinance prohibiting parking on Plaza Drive from Kickaboo East on both sides of the street and on West Slover Street from Leo Street west to the Canadian River on both sides of the street. Do we have a staff report on this matter?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this item was on your consent agenda at the last meeting, and then it's kind of a two-part series. We put it on the consent agenda with the recommendations of staff and the kind of commission, and then upon your approval, then we formulate um, that into the official ordinance. And so, uh, if the commission approves, uh, number three tonight, you will be just ratifying what you uh, already discussed at your last meeting.
Well, it's over. It just, with the bridge out, it hasn't gone over that few houses up there, so I don't know why it will be up in there to start with.
We have some complaints.
Yeah. Okay, uh, uh, we have, uh, the staff has informed us on this matter. The chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor here. Could you read the title, please, ma'am?
This is an ordinance amendment six, sixteen dash one thirty-eight, chapter sixteen, article five of the Code of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing for no parking on portions of certain streets, naming said streets, designating the portions where parking is prohibited, and other conditions relating to parking and declaring an emergency.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number four.
Emergency.
Three.
Oh, emergency, one emergency?
So moved.
Have a motion for an emergency clause? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Daxter. Okay, let's vote on that matter. Motion carries. Okay. Item number four then. Okay. Consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, OMRF, long son payment for defined benefit plan for Charles Huff. Uh, I think we normally, this is kind of routine maintenance, isn't it? So, a chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Agee. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number five. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on Elaine Taylor's appeal of an administrative order requiring the demolition of the residential structure located at fourteen fifteen East Tenth Street. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Uh, the property here located fourteen fifteen East Tenth Street, uh, generally located just north of Boy Scout Park. Um, we had our hearing for this property September tenth. Unfortunately, the property owner did not show up for the hearing, so, uh, of course, we ordered condemnation, and written notice was provided to the commission, of course, to appeal it at this point. Generally, the issues on this site have started in twenty thirteen, mostly to do with maintenance, tall grass, weeds, debris. Um, March of twenty fourteen, it actually had come up for hearing for bladed structure. The property owner at that point had pulled a remodel permit, which, which gave him roughly six months to get the work done. Uh, unfortunately, no work was done at that point. It came back for hearings. Uh, we have had two hearings at this point. It was reconvened, uh, reconvened the first time in order to give them time to once again pull a remodel permit. Um, unfortunately, as it turned out, September tenth, they did not, did not come, and we've got pictures about a day before. No maintenance had been done once again. The, the grass was still high, the brush was still, still piled there. The property's roughly thirteen hundred square feet in size, uh, kind of a shotgun home, with fire damage on the front and significant structural damage as well throughout the whole property.
But do you have any idea how long ago the fire was?
You know, I believe it was in twenty thirteen, give or take. At that point, the property went up for sale, and, uh, the current property owners wanted, had purchased it at that point with the hopes to remodel the site. Since it's not showing up for the hearing, we haven't heard from the property owner at this point, so I have really no indication as to whether they plan to, to pull the permit though, though late at this point. And I'd hope that they might be here tonight, and it doesn't look like they are, but of course, we should give them a chance if they, they happen to be here to, to say their piece. But unfortunately, if, if, if they have, have nothing to offer at this point, staff's gonna forward the same recommendation.
So, so I have one question about the letter that they sent.
Sure.
We received this letter on the fifteenth of this month.
That's correct.
But it acts like that they, they didn't, they weren't able to purchase the, the remodel permit, but I thought you said that they had already had an extension for the remodel permit.
Right, so, so it's a separate, completely separate, this has been going on so long that that's actually in the past. They had, they had actually paid for a remodel permit just fine, and at that point, they have six months to make the, the proper repairs.
So that expired and that-
That expired. Several months went by, and it went back on our list.
We wouldn't have allowed a, a second permit anyway, would, I mean, after they, after we'd set for-
Sure. We try to, try to be as helpful as we possibly can, uh, if somebody really comes up with a game plan. But the point of the remodel permit is to not only submit one, but to have one that's justifiable, one that, that makes sense. You can't just pull it and say, okay, this gives me six more months. Um, between myself and the chief code officer, we, we need to make sure that it is actually justifiable reason to have the remodel permit, so... They sounded like they, they really did want to, want to do it, but unfortunately, at this point, once again, they have not, not for permit, and, uh...
Oh, now, look, the house, the foundation doesn't have that much trouble. The man on the roof and everything else does.
Yeah.
Bad shape, but the wind has always been boarded up since you've been working with them.
And your recommendation?
My recommendation was, was honestly to keep, uh, you're right, your recommendation, to bring the condemnation at this point. I'm, hopefully, they, we can give a chance to come up if they are-
I'll ask here, see if there's anyone. Is there anyone here from, uh, that, that has possession of this property or any ties to this property at fourteen fifteen East Tenth Street? No one coming forward yet. Okay.
Just, just for, for information purposes here, uh, our very next meeting will be October eighth. That's about seventeen days away. That would be too soon, but, but if the commission chose to, November twelfth would be, uh, the following hearing that we could do.
Could it, uh, the last picture that was taken was nine-nine with all of that brush and grass that length? So, there hasn't, there hasn't been any, even any attempt, I see, uh, in regard to mowing or any other landscaping, much less work on it.
That's correct, and, and, and of course, that was a date for the hearing, that's, that's why we've been on those pictures, to be sure.
Okay.
Can't walk around behind the house. I went out there, like, to see, you can walk down both sides of the grass, tall grass and everything, but there's a building in the back, and can't get back to it for the brush and stuff, so...
I think the city's been more than generous on this as far as the time and the attempts, and I'd hate to be the neighbor.
Well, a neighbor jumped all over me when I was, I thought I was fixing by the house, and I wonder what I was gonna do with it, so I explained to him, we had the hearing tonight, we'd make a decision.
Okay, any other discussion in this matter? Okay, thank you, Justin. If not, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I think we've, uh, spent a lot of time on cleaning up the neighborhood and stuff like that, and it's not very far from Boy Scout Park, and, uh, it's, uh, the neighbors, the one that talked to me was really upset about the, not anything being done, so I'd move we, uh, go ahead and, what is it, demolition or?
Mm-hmm.
Deny the appeal. Is that what we need to do? Deny the appeal?
Deny the appeal.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the appeal by Vice Mayor here, and a second by Commissioner Agee. Any other discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number six, consider bids, Main Street Skate Project from Beard Street to Oklahoma Avenue, uh, just a cry wiki, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
They even work somehow.
Okay, this is the bid opening for our Main Street, uh, Streetscape Project. Uh, we received three bids. First bid opened was from CGC, uh, out of Edmond, Oklahoma. Their bid was three million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, the second bid opened was from Rudy Construction Company out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was four million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, fifty-one dollars. And the last, third bid opened was from A-Tech Paying. Uh, their bid was four million, five hundred seventy thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars. Uh, we would ask that this item be deferred so that we can tabulate the bids. It's pretty extensive bid schedule. There's about five pages of quantities and stuff, so we need to, uh, tab those correctly, and then, uh, we'll need to look at, uh, available funding because, uh, the available funding that I reported last commission meeting was about two-point-seven million, so we'll have to either come up with some additional money or maybe tweak it a little bit. Won't know until we run through the bid tabs and everything. So, we recommend that defer this item until the next meeting.
So moved, recommend.
Motion by Vice Mayor here.
Second.
To defer this. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. B, emergency generator to North Radio Tower. Mr. Blain, yes?
Kind of a particular reason these two weren't put together, the tower and the generator.
There's a little bit different scope of work, we're gonna be glad to go with that, so... The, the, the climb on the tower, the first, especially with the stuff that I have, I have a contractual contract in my hand.
Which one is this?
This is the generator.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. Uh, notice was published in the Shawnee News Star and on the city's website concerning, uh, notice to bidders. Notice was also sent via Twitter and Facebook. A notice was mailed to nineteen potential bidders from a list of contacts that we had on file and from electrical contractors that were listed in the AT&T Shawnee Telephone Directory and Yellow Pages. Uh, six potential bidders received packets at the city clerk's office. We received four bids this evening. First, uh, bid is from Imaginis in Broken Air, Oklahoma. The bid amount was thirty thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. We requested an alternate for a two-year warranty. The additional amount for the two-year warranty was two hundred twenty-five dollars, and additional amount for a five-year warranty is four hundred and seventy dollars. Second bid was from Libra, Libra Electric Company of Oklahoma City. Bid amount is thirty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars. Additional two-year warranty, seven hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Additional five-year warranty, one thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. Third bid was from Allphase Electric, Inc. of Shawnee, Oklahoma. Their bid was fifty-two thousand, four hundred and five dollars and no cents. Additional amount for the two-year warranty is six hundred and sixty dollars and no cents, and for the additional five-year warranty, eight hundred and eighty dollars and no cents. And the final bid was from M&amp;J Contractors LLC of Ada, Oklahoma. Their bid was thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and no cents. The two-year warranty is included in their bid. Uh, the additional five-year warranty is thirteen hundred dollars. Staff would request that you defer action on this to allow us to go back, review the bid packets, and to come back with a recommendation.
What did we have budgeted for that?
Around seventy.
Around seventy thousand, so we came in under what we estimated as well.
Not even natural gas out there to go to match-
Natural gas is across the street, across Kickaboo. It would require thirteen thousand dollars from ONG to bring the line across Kickaboo into us. That's why we had to go with propane instead, so...
May we defer? A motion to defer by my Vice Mayor here. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Okay, let's vote.
Probably could've saved some money on that thing if we'd have gone natural gas.
Yes, I don't doubt about that.
About thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item received, radio tower site antenna system.
I was hoping this was included with the, you know, tower we got out here. It wasn't.
One?
Twist the arm or anything.
I tried. I, I asked the company who was working on it. Their, our companies were really busy right now.
They're going out of business too, that.
One other one.
Yeah.
Their insurance is getting really hard.
Oh, that one did. Little boys put that on that orange out there, and then block that on that arm and work. Not many of them sell the phone devices.
Again, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, notice was published in the Shawnee News Star for this item and on the city's website, also sent via Twitter and Facebook. Notice was mailed to five potential bidders, uh, from a list of contacts that we had on file and from, uh, contacts that, that we had made, um, at a recent trade show that we attended in Oklahoma City. Uh, two potential bidders received packets at the city clerk's office. We received one bid this evening from JTS out of Dallas, Texas, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, our estimate was about fifty-three thousand dollars, uh, for the work on this, so staff would request that you defer action on this to allow us to review the bid and come back with a recommendation.
Vice Mayor here had made the motion to defer, so the staff can review it. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Commissioner Daxter, second, do you? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number seven's acknowledged, the sales tax report.
I get there.
I may be acknowledging.
In this, uh, September, we collected, uh, one million, four hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, which is actually sixty-seven thousand, uh, um, over last year, and, um, we're over, um, eighty-one thousand dollars from two thousand and thirteen. For the fiscal year so far this year, we're up four point three five percent.
Point three, four point three.
And we only budgeted two, so...
Oh, what now?
We only had budgeted two percent, and we're up four point three five percent. So, sales tax is coming in well. The new properties have helped, so... But we do have to pay some of that back.
Yeah, have we, have we gotten close to having, knowing what to pay them back on, or?
That ten-dollar project, have we?
Not yet.
They still have, what, one or two empty? Still have one empty or two empty?
One, I think.
Two.
There's several outlets there, three or four.
Oh, lots, okay.
And then on the script development, there's a, yeah.
Are we just like setting money aside for that? I mean-
I'm keeping a running tab.
Okay.
As a month.
So it won't be hitting, and Justin won't get a paycheck?
I actually have it separate out, separated out this year, what, um, that property collected versus what the other ones.
That's great.
So a new, different line on it.
Good job.
That's a good job. That way we don't, we're not hitting so hard. You have more questions, or, on the line? Okay, City Manager update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. I'll be brief, but I wanted to update you on, on three items this evening. Uh, the first of which is, at your meeting on October, Monday, October fifth, we will, uh, have a special call meeting from five-thirty until six-thirty. It will be an open public meeting to discuss branding and community, uh, image, and that will be with the consultant that was hired by Visit Shawnee Incorporated, do that work for the community and, and for us. And so, that, again, is at five-thirty on October fifth. If for some reason you won't be able to, uh, participate in that earlier session, uh, please let me know, and I will try to get you plugged in, uh, with the consultant, uh, at another, another time that week.
Justin, where will that be held in?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, should've mentioned that. Uh, number two, the park assessment, uh, is being finalized by our consultant. We appreciate the comments that, um, from the commission, and that was presented. Uh, that will be discussed at the October seventh Planning Commission meeting, and then the final draft will then be before you, hopefully, at the October nineteenth, uh, City Commission meeting for, for formal adoption. So, we're just working with our consultant to, uh, incorporate any last, uh, changes.
Now, that's, that's just the report, right, from that consulting company? That's not anything, uh, as far as a plan, as well, of what we're going to proceed with?
No, it isn't officially, uh, no, as staff, we will, we will before we implement, um, anything, any major, uh, quality changes in terms of, you know, operationally with our facilities, if we, if we consolidate, uh, that will come back to the commission before we do that. And I wanted to, uh, last thing this evening is follow-up with you on our discussion at the workshop a week ago regarding fire station number two. Working with staff to, uh, develop a process to go out for RFTQ for a, uh, architectural firm to help develop plans and, and, uh, do that in a cost-conscious way. Uh, we probably will have that before you on October nineteenth as well, uh, for your approval, uh, to seek, to seek those, um, uh, firms, and then we will come back, uh, with that information and, and go through a, a formal selection process. So, gonna go through this kind of slowly, diligently, make sure that we select a, a good firm, and that we can fix this station in a, in a permanent manner. So, I thank you for that feedback last week. I just wanted to provide you that update. We're still evaluating, uh, the old station on East Main, and looking at ways to, uh, make sure that we have a good response time, uh, on the east part of town. It's, it's acceptable now, but if there's a way to station individuals at the old station per, uh, on temporary basis, uh, we will do that. We're just evaluating that still.
And no decision has been made yet about where those funds will come from, right? You're gonna go out for the design first, or?
Uh, no, it, anything, um, when we come back to the commission with a, with a, uh, selection, if the commission approves us to, to go out and seek, uh, qualified firms, when we come back to the commission with a, a firm that we would like to select, we will also include any necessary budget amendments and, and indicate where those funds are coming from.
Okay.
Well, the architect, whoever he hires, should, uh, maybe take some time and review the building before he'll come up with a next one, I think, yeah.
I agree, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Anything else? Do you have any new business?
You want to start on new business?
At this time, Commissioners' comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Um, as you know, that, uh, the new organization, Historic Shawnee Alliance, has, uh, is participating in the Keep Oklahoma Beautiful Paint Day Project, and if you have a chance to go by one fourteen West Main and take a look at the building that we're working on, I think you'll start to see a really nice transformation taking place, but I really wanted to, uh, mention the volunteers. We've had about thirty volunteers over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we've had people from the OBU Athletic Department, uh, people from the, uh, Finley and Cook, um, firm, and also from, uh, Bethel High School and, um, the CPN, and I just want to let you know that we have some really great citizens in this city that, uh, that don't mind throwing up their sleeves and doing some volunteer work to help make Shawnee downtown, uh, a better place. We really appreciate it.
Great.
Any other comments?
I've got it.
Go ahead.
Uh, glad to see Mr. Bryce back.
That's what I was gonna say. We're glad to have Mr. Bryce back. Wow.
I, I'd like to make note, um, also our mention, I should say, of the community market tomorrow. I believe they're going to have their groundbreaking celebration at two o'clock, and that's at eleven twenty-five East Main. So those of you who are interested in, uh, a market, uh, that's a great opportunity to come down and see what the, uh, city of Shawnee has to offer.
I have one there.
Okay.
I, I should've emailed you, but I didn't. What about the lighting around the airport? Are we, is that moving on? We left the contract on it? Does that, do you have any idea about that?
Can we talk about that in airport facility?
Uh?
Can we talk about that in airport?
Oh, okay.
It already located.
That's all right, it's like-
All right, sorry.
Okay, okay. Uh, anything else under Commissioners' comments? If not, then I will, uh, return to the, uh, recess, actually, to the Shawnee Airport Authority. I will call into order and declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Daxter, uh, made the motion. Do I have a second?
My second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two, consideration, discussion, and possible action on an agreement for service with H.W. Lochner, Inc. regarding an Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission-funded concrete apron project. Mr. English.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, item two and item three are both concern a project that the, uh, Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission would like to financially provide to the airport. Uh, at their last bi-monthly quarterly, or bi-monthly meeting, uh, they picked four airports in particular to do this project for. Uh, we're one of them, Seminole, uh, Elk City, and Claremore. They want, they want to do this for them. And what they want to do is pretty much put a, uh, is what's called an apron hardstand. And what they did, what they want to do is they want to replace just a portion of our existing asphalt apron that the aircraft park on, and they want to replace that with a concrete pad. If you look at, uh, the end of the memo that I wrote, you can kind of see where the location of that concrete pad will be. Uh, it's about fifty feet wide by a hundred and fifty feet tall, and they want to do that for, for two reasons. Number one is, of course, we can park aircraft there, and it's gonna slow down the deterioration of the asphalt, uh, parking area. And number two, uh, will, it would actually give a, uh, a parking spot for the- And number two, it would actually give a parking spot for the heavier aircraft. Now, we've had heavy aircraft park out there at the airport before, not for really long periods of time, and usually, usually in the winter months. But what can happen is if you have, I'm talking about the super-heavy jets that are parked out there, what can happen, particularly in the summer months, is that that sun beats down on the asphalt, expands. And what can happen, and has happened, not at, not at Shawnee Airport, but some other airports in Oklahoma, at the least, it might cause divots in the apron, or at the worst, and like I said, this has happened, at an airport that I won't name, but the aircraft will actually sink up to the wings and cause significant damage to the aircraft and the pavement as well. So this is why they're kind of handing out these, these projects. The total cost?
Will there be tie-downs on this concrete?
No tie-downs. It's primarily for your, your bigger jets, your, your turboprops. Of course, we chalk them down, but I take that back. There will be tie-downs, because they'll be in the existing locations, parking locations that have tie-down, tie-downs on there already, so.
I don't think still water, like, out of windstorm up there, and it's like that, or many other words of aircraft things.
I think most of those were OSU's planes as well. They're student planes. Total cost of this project's going to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the estimated cost that the OAC has given us. They're going to, they're wanting to fund ninety-five percent of the project. So, and of course, that would mean a five percent local match on our end, which would amount to twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. So, so item two on the agenda is, is those two things. It allows me to submit a letter to the OAC signed by the mayor that says, we want to do this project, we're going to commit the funds to this project, and we can proceed. And it also allows us to con, sign an agreement of services to our consultants, so they can do all the engineering work, all the preliminary work. Their contract is included in that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate. Their contract is forty-four thousand dollars, one hundred and ten dollars, I'm sorry, forty-four thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, two thousand, two hundred and five dollars is what we would, what we would have to match. Item three is a budget amendment, and that would reserve funds to pay for this project, as I said, about twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. This came on my radar fairly recently. This isn't anything that we budgeted for this year. Budget's a little tight because we have to match the funds for the federal project that we're doing as well. Cindy and I have talked about it. We're, we can, we can kind of play with the numbers and try to cover the cost the best we can this year, but of course, there is a likely possibility that it could run a deficit in the airport budget this year. I know there's a little bit of money in reserves in the airport budget. We ran a couple of surpluses the past couple of years. Cindy, you may be able to speak more on that, but I just wanted to let you know that this would take a budget, and then, first of all, we did not budget for this item.
The city had to pay the hundred percent and then just reimburse them? Is that the way it works?
Correct.
So if you come up with a shortfall, it's going to be, it might be run into next fiscal year, because the project...
It possibly could, yeah. Thing with projects, um...
But actually, could.
But as soon as we get the, um, as soon as we pay the bill, we turn it in, and we get it very quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, it, there's, it's like a week turnaround.
And, and if we go forward with it, we're guaranteed to get the ninety-five percent, right?
Yes.
So it's just a matter of timing.
And the airport has made a little bit of money the last few years, and it's very volatile, because we don't know what sales...
Right.
You know, we think we get twelve thousand, five hundred out of operating.
So the, the maximum deficit we would run would be the, our, our twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
Which is not that much.
Not to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's a very gracious offer by the OAC. It's something they want to move on fairly quickly. They started out thinking they would just do all the engineering in-house, but decided, hey, let's just let the airports use their consultants, and we'll just pay the bill.
So we'll be able to park a seven forty-seven out there, we just get...
Exactly, right.
Is it up to two hundred and fifty-five thousand total? Or is it, like, if it goes over the price of two hundred and fifty-five?
Whatever the cost is going to be, the OAC is going to match, match that. This is the estimated cost, but they will, of course, if it means, if it does mean it goes over a little bit, we still just have to pay that five percent, so it might go up from that twelve thousand, five hundred dollar mark, but the OAC is committing to...
But if it's under, we pay less?
Correct.
And you heard those estimates.
But if it's, okay, but if it's half a million, we pay twenty-five or so, right?
Probably.
Right.
Would that cause any type of audit binding if we go into it? Okay.
What was the, when did the lightning strike out there?
That was, that was several months ago at this point.
But what, was it the runway lights that hit?
It, it got about sixteen runway lights and a long row of taxiway lights as well.
I don't get the money from insurance.
I know, but did, is there a hole in the ground or anything?
It wasn't a hole in the ground. The only, well, I say the only evidence, but you could see where it struck. It, it either struck a light specifically or just around it, it was just burnt out and black.
Water team lights around it, because there's no around it, so the lightning strikes and the water carries.
Never heard about that, that's interesting.
There's a black picture.
Okay, what action do we need to do here? I'm a little bit confused.
Let him write a letter, I think, is what.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I know I lumped those two items.
We need a, need a motion on the first one?
Yes.
And then you're going to write a letter on the second one, or?
No, I'm sorry, the, item two is, the letter that requests that we, that says that we want to do this project is kind of lumped in with item two on here. It's just a courtesy for the OAC. The, the main item, or the main subject on item two is that agreement with our consultants that they're going to do all the preliminary work to move forward with this project.
Motion to approve the agreement that's, if you want to do that.
So I may...
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Herr. Do I have a second?
Agree.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Is there any airport new business?
I got through the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, budget amendment, airport budget. For new grant funds and insurance proceeds. Do I have a motion?
Could we, could we have just...
Have a second by Commissioner A. G.
Could we have just a moment of discussion? Cindy, can you educate me? Do we need to do a cap on the amount or anything? Say it's not to exceed a certain amount? Or are we going to be good by just saying that whatever the percentage is up to a certain amount? I mean, I've heard Mr. English state that it, the amount was an estimate, and so we're looking at a certain amount the city will have to...
Right, the OAC is very close in their estimates, and I assume it doesn't, I haven't seen it go over.
Well, it comes back for...
But they'll, they'll come back to us anyway, right? They'll come back to us for the, when they get the final number.
Okay. Because they, the OAC gets X amount of grant money, and they're extending us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so they're going to be very conservative on, you know, they have, may have ten million dollars. So they have told all these communities, this is what's going to cost to do this project. So their estimate's very, very close.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a motion on this item number three. Do I have a second?
Wait, this is for the insurance and budget? Is it? Oh, okay, we're talking about number three, okay.
Right. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner A. G. Okay, let's vote.
I did. Yeah, it's okay.
Commissioner Shaw. Motion carries. Any new business? Okay, I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and call to order the municipal authority. I will declare we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Hall made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is any new business on the Shawnee Municipal Airport Authority?
No, sir, no new business.
Okay, then I will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Airport Authority. I will reconvene our commission meeting.
Not the airport, the municipal authority?
No, we did the airport.
Did I say airport?
I'm sorry. I'll call, I'll close the municipal authority, okay, and reconvene the commission meeting and call it adjourned.
Very good meeting.